We've already hit the volunteer portion.
I'd make a motion to do that.
All right, who are our nominees for this year?
Well, it's probably my turn unless somebody's really...
I nominate Jerry.
Fired up, are you sure you want to do that?
I didn't even second that, too.
I second that, all those in favor of Jerry as chair.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side?
Did you hear the... Did you hear the whistle go through?
You guys want to flip coins for the other one?
That's what's going on now. If you guys can go up, you might have to help along with that, so.
Leroy's not here, so well, we can make... Leroy's not here. He can be vice chair.
Do you want him or should I, Jason?
I don't care.
I don't either.
I've got more reason to leave than you.
Should I give you a chair like a week ago? Wasn't he with that next?
I had about two years, two or strong two-year suspension there. That's why I called to vice.
I'll make that motion now.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Now it's all you.
Only me, only me. Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Reagan?
Here.
And I am here. Approved, January 4th, 2022, agenda.
The only thing, I've not heard back from Clay County unless anybody else has. Why don't we delete that off the agenda if I haven't heard anything from them?
I think I just take it off the sack, it's looking at over. Then I don't know how long it's gonna take you to get to it. I would make a motion to take that off.
Motion's been made. Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? December 28th, 2021 minutes. Any addition, any corrections to those minutes?
Everything looks good to me, I'll make a motion to accept them.
Mr. Reagan?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? I'm going to carry. The SCSC board recommendation, that compensation rule.
They spelled that correctly.
This is in your packet.
We could not recall?
I've not heard back. I'm confused. I've not heard anything. Some say you can, some say you can't, I don't know.
I'd like to know if we can recall them.
What's the reason to recall them?
I'd like to know why the numbers they came up with. And why the salaries or supervisors don't get anything. That's just me.
We have representatives on the board, I talk to them each year. I often hear I'm the only one ever come, so. I don't know how we expect them to represent us if we don't reach out to them. So I have a hard time calling them back again because if they didn't, if they have something they want to address, we don't talk to them, so. I don't see it as being reasonable.
It kind of works both ways, so as a representative, they should reach out to the board. Because I hope everybody else has a representative on that board, that individual should reach out to those people. So I don't know why that would be any different.
Well, I'm not sure I kind of agree with you on the allegation. I don't agree. The recommendations would be any different. I'm not sure.
Need to be in compliance with the state requirement for the sheriff. What was the amount on that?
Six percent of.
Six percent.
That would get him an average of one department, twelve gave him the average of all three of them.
What are we supposed to use, the average of all three or the average of one?
I don't, I think the board just has to recommend it, I don't know if the board, what their obligation is to that. The board just had to recommend, which they did, so.
Is that what we have to have to make this work?
The twelve percent would make him an average between three departments. Six percent would give him the average of one of the departments.
That's my question, because I know Lake O'Brien's gonna be a fourteen percent increase. To get them compliant with whatever that's supposed to be. And I don't think we're terribly far off from that, so that's why I'm wondering if that's... Because if we pass the wrong amount, we'll be back here having this discussion again.
I don't see any code where it says we have to do it, but the compensation law's required. And I can see now, Row, that if we don't keep in line with the code requires that they're just gonna do varying levels and we'll be... You know, and the situation would be harder to give anybody a raise if we don't want to go along with meeting that part of the code, so. I can see taking steps towards it. Six percent gives us one. One comparable to one entity that's mentioned. To set in the right direction here, one in my opinion.
What's your wishes?
I get six percent for that. So I cut both of them down by fifty percent. So I'll give you six and three. If I'm wrong, tell me. Because I can't see jumping all the time, I like steps.
Well, sure.
Probably for the sheriff, for the recorder.
Oh.
Those are all the same. On the whole, it's at sixty percent, so put in three.
Any thoughts, Jizzle?
Inflation rate is, they don't make six percent, so I'm here. I try to be a little bit higher, but.
I always have a hard time with inflation. Because when that's at zero, you don't get service.
But is it six percent, is it probably nine?
Yeah. Yeah. Inflation, yeah.
I'd make a motion to have all those.
Support that.
Got a motion, got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? I'm here. The supervisors are all in?
Okay. Nope, we can take it down if you want to take a cut. We can take it down, make it ten percent or something.
I don't need more than one hundred percent. All right.
Increase on the face there, I'd like to.
Prove county newspaper.
Pro official county newspaper. I make a motion. Go with, uh, do we call it now, I don't have information on press moves. Got a motion? Press moves.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? I'm here. Pro committee is on. Same as the vice chair.
I mean anything to tell him, I'd be grateful to.
Good for me.
I would ask that we identify... An alternate for the...
What's it called?
The mental health coalition used to be called.
Yeah, but they have care connection.
No, not care management, they're suicide prevention. Last time I seen them, it was still on the line, they'd gone with the chair routinely.
Usually they'd go off the chair.
Yeah, they'd have. Last year they just kept that.
Oh, a healthcare coalition?
No, a suicide prevention. My first one, they had.
Oh, okay.
Right, they still use the chair.
Or always has.
They had. So we continue that practice or I thought we had made a change, I would stay on that one.
I thought we had as well.
I'd like to have all made the chair and the alternate down or just another someone to... If I had missed last one, I kind of liked it. I just wasn't sure if we'd call it one. Or we just go stick with the chair?
I'm fine with Jason taking that. I'd want to be the alternate, that'd be right.
Sure. Go ahead.
For date going to the suicide prevention, you're on it and then Jerry?
I can do alternate for her.
And then Ed will do the alternate, okay?
Make a motion to... Do we want that change?
Make that motion. Is there a safety thing on there?
What?
Safety board number. Is that, so is that gonna be?
Leroy, I'll be the order member.
But they didn't meet it all last year. Is that something they're gonna resume this year?
I would think they would. Just hope it's backed off a little bit for me. Who has that up?
Stay in here. I guess I'd make a motion to approve the committee assignments, pending that one change.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's only one should carry. Twenty-four to third judicial record.
That's light now.
Yeah, I've always been on it, so.
Make a motion to the twenty-five.
For? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those. Here. What board member wants to add a solid waste agents?
He's, uh... I'd make a motion for the twenty-eight.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those. Motion here. It's... Three point Jason on the conservation board.
I'd make that motion.
Support.
All those in favor?
Oops, it's a pin.
Man, he gets stuck into that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, motion here. Whoa. Go ahead and go up for nine o'clock. Man, the price is on the board.
Thank you. Um, I have to just apologize, I'm getting like a little frog in my throat, but on the backside of being sick, um, I promise.
You're not contagious, right?
I'm not contagious, I don't have COVID or anything like that, so. Um, but I want to come back and talk to you about, I think this is about my twenty-fifth year meeting, you know, to County. It's been a long time. Um, I came to Northwest Iowa, um, yeah, one time ago. Here's this nice farmer and just got plenty to eat in Northwest Iowa, now he's not, so that's been great. Um, what I want to do is give you guys some of the updates on what we're doing, um, with the family crisis center. As, um, it's been kind of a crazy time with COVID. Um, but one of the things that we're doing is working currently in about eighteen victims of domestic violence. Human trafficking is always on there, that's part of the AG doctors, um, I can't tell you exactly how many of those are human trafficking, but I'm pretty sure all of them are in domestic violence. Um, we have six of our residents here in Osceola County that are working with our specialty team in homicide and violent crime. So that could be a vehicular homicide, it could be a regular homicide. They couldn't live here and the crime happened someplace else. Um, it could be any number of things. One of the things we started this last year in the hospital that's really taken hold of it is putting, um, if they've got a person in an exam room and they're talking about domestic violence, the doctor can call us and we'll go right to the hospital or clinic. Um, so that really saves the client from having to come through, um, go through a lot of channels or whatever to get to us. And the doctors really like that because they know then the person is getting hurt, so they don't have to worry about that. And so this last year, there was one doctor that said, yeah, I'm gonna find out for that, and so we've been doing that. A brand new program for Osceola County is a housing program. Last year we had none. This, this year we picked up a HUD grant and we were able to put thirty-eight people, um, in housing. So that's not domestic violence. I went out on a limb and got a HUD grant for general population as well. So I could do homelessness prevention. So if somebody was behind on their rent, I could go out and help them so they didn't get evicted. The landlords here are my best friends, I can tell you, because we've been picking up a lot of back rent, um, when people, um, couldn't work or weren't work because of the layoffs and stuff. So thirty-eight families were able to take some of that HUD money, um, and use that and be alright. Just about to the end of that, but a year ago we had none. But Osceola is one of those counties, we have ten counties that that works for. And we, it was out there and nobody in Northwest Iowa was doing it, so we said, well, we'll take none. We do have HUD money for victims of domestic violence and that's what we call rapid helping. So once they are free from violence, we can get them finance. We can pay the first month's rent, um, the last month's rent and all utilities and hooked up, so it's turnkey ready. So we've always been able to do that, but this is the first year we've been able to help anybody, um, in most of this. So that was a huge, huge time. And then the greatest call numbers is like twenty on a regular basis. And that's just coming into the state hotline, that's not coming in locally. So outside of, um, the regular numbers that call in the state hotline, um, for information services, uh, they, they call in if they got a trial coming up. Uh, we have twenty-four hour staff, we run the state, um, called centered by, um, all ninety-nine counties through the attorney general services. People always wonder, how did that ever get put in Northwest Iowa? It's like, well, why does everything have to be in Illinois all the time? And so we have a big, uh, program up here, which has been very, very successful, uh, for that service. Um, Osceola County has been one of our first funders, uh, for the agency and I appreciate that and I hope that we can continue getting those funds each year because it goes to things that grants don't pay for, like locks or broken windows or transportation, bus tickets and things like that for, um, the residents up here. So, um, we ask that you consider in the tight year, I know, to, to continue that support for the family crisis center because it's greatly needed for the, it's close to the county. Quite tough, I can't, like you talked about. You have to be cautious, I like coffee in the car.
How much was your cost?
Thirty-five hundred.
Is that more or less than last year?
A lot, sir.
Same.
What happened in nineteen twenty-four?
Um...
Sorry. I digress.
Uh, yeah. A little rock that a candidate called Rush was establishing.
Oh.
That answers that question.
Sorry.
I don't know.
So, some of you guys I've known for a long time and Guard was here all the years and over the years, I appreciate that. Um, so any other questions that we can do, what you'd like to do better? Uh, we, we love the sheriff's office, in fact, when Doug was here, it was the only county that state recommended for having a good relationship with the victim service agency. He got on the board and we got on the board and we're still working with the sheriff's office in that manner. We appreciate that, that's one of the things that small towns, I like adding. I really like how they still have lawyers present, and so we, we have that here and we appreciate that, thank you guys.
Appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you. Any other questions you have? Thank you for the work you guys do and we appreciate your support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. You're in the coffee.
Who's salary increase?
It's going to fifty-seven thousand seven twenty-three.
Was that a percentage or just next step?
Yeah, just a next step.
Here, I got a motion to approve that. Start a motion to the lady. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion here. Pro the union congress of the sheriff's office. How's that a one year, two year?
Two year, every year. I'm allergic.
Two year with reopen or annually?
Yeah. With a reopen or a year two. But only annually, it's not an option.
I did see that look like you got some garbage in there.
Yeah, quite a bit of, uh...
I thought we charged you one year and if it went two years, there was a guaranteed wage increase, but it's here.
The way Jack described it was that it would be a reopen or a year two.
That's right.
Because they wanted a three year with wages all the way through. We ended up with a two year with a reopen or a year two.
Jess and I talked on the platform.
Me too.
So I have a motion?
No, I've made two in your...
What?
I want to change the motion if you want to accept the surrender.
I'd make a motion except the... Support.
Support that, that's support. I have a motion and support, I have the... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion here.
What? It's drinking.
I saw it, I was just listening. Engineer here. Section. You feel bad?
I couldn't.
Too early.
We've got to decide, we start at Clay County.
This stuff from Bridge, is that just for, uh, nation?
It was.
It was.
Hold on, see here a little bit earlier, but... Let me talk about future agenda, I think we need to talk about the twenty-fifth, that's that drainage district, no fifteen public hearing in Dixon County in the morning, I didn't know if they were gonna... Start later and go to that, or what you guys wanted to do as well?
Because they're supposed to get us that information on Martha Prior to... To know rest of that.
Home's been working on it, I know they're gonna be there.
I have... Have you guys seen anything on that?
On fifteen?
Yeah. How's that film budget looking this year?
Pretty awesome.
Isn't it?
They're gonna change in a hurry.
Yeah. You might not have to touch it till March.
Don't say that too quick.
All right, they'll change in a hurry.
Yeah. That ten day looks pretty clear right now.
Wonder what this happens, so we get it in March and April.
Buzz is gonna be, it'll be a late spring and, uh, won't be able to get in the field when you want to.
There it is.
More hides back up in the mid-thirties to forty next week.
You went back kind of early this morning today.
Me?
Yeah. Wasn't I due?
No, no.
I was, I was you.
I wasn't very early this morning.
Oh, you weren't?
No.
Well, I guess you guys are on the hot seat now, so.
Were you?
Yeah. Morning.
Morning.
How's it pretty good today?
Good. Good. Um, so, um, CFE is looking to do some improvements, both short and long term, um, at our Ashton facility. And, uh, I just made out a few maps here. Just an overview of what that is. I just wanted to, I guess, bring it in front of the supervisors, uh, more for information than anything, um, and also maybe some advice on the next steps. Um, right now, the look that, I know it's kind of hard to imagine, but if you look at, at the picture, uh, we've got a couple needs really glaring need in Ashton, our facility. Our facility flow into that, into that facility is, is really quite bottlenecked as you come off of street from the east and onto First Avenue and enter onto our scale there by our office, our office sits outside of, of our facility there. Right now, uh, because it's such a tight curving radius, uh, semis have to go down to the south, make a loop and come back on the scale uh, before exiting and going into our grain dumps. Either in the cement house, the steel, uh, facilities to the west, or there's another dump pit, uh, down the road there also on the East Avenue Street. So what we're looking at, we, we really need to replace our scale in Ashton first, uh, to get a really tough shape. And, uh, and we would, before we go spend the money to do that, and as we look at long-term needs there as far as dumping capacity, convenience for our customers, uh, we would propose, and we've talked to the city of Ashton about it, uh, Jordan Damm, our location manager, has done most of the talking on that. Uh, with them is, uh, consideration of, of closing First Avenue for two blocks, um, in the future from, I call it Main Street going nowhere, parallel to our facilities. Um, if we did, if we were to be able to do that, we would reposition the scale further out into the street area for, for our customers to make more of a an easy in and out to the facility. And then also with that, uh, we consider, uh, actually building a new office. The office that's there today is quite dated and, and get kind of tough shape. Uh, we'll put a new, uh, scale, pro, eventually office, and then next plans would be to add, put additional dumping capacity there uh, in size, in size and speed, uh, for the facility. The Ashton facility for us is our only shuttle loader in our company, um, which is extremely important to us and to our farmers that would serve in the area. Which is extremely important to us and to our farmers that would serve in the area. Last few years, really increased traffic through that facility again. Given the export markets, production, you know, and it's always. For us, it's always that backstop if you went to the market. And market access for our farmers is extremely important. We, we load from Merrily Corner facility, but we have done some bean trains. Did four bean trains last year out of it. But primarily Cor- Cornic will go to Mexico. The southern southwest bean market, California, Arizona, New Mexico. We can get P N W out of that, which would be Pacific Northwest, which would service the Asia market. But we don't exchange very well in that market as far as being competitive. We're more competitive in the, in the Mexico southwest bean market. Also have the ability to go golf there. Again, it's a little bit more difficult, but we have the ability to go there. We really feel long-term, this is absolutely a hub that we need to maintain. And, and expand honestly in both capacity, storage capacity and speed. We, if you notice anything about us, we continue to try and increase convenience and speed for our customers. Which we think is very, very important for the future. So. As we look at it, this is kinda like the first step of redoing Ashton, if you would. I don't know Jerry, if you've ever delivered into Ashton or Mike, Jason. If you go in there, it's extremely congested. Mike, you probably have.
I've watched it.
You know, as far as especially the cement house, longer semis and whatnot, it's really, really hard to get in and out. The scale access is quite honestly a pain. And we just need, we think we need to reposition some of those assets, both short and long term for our customers and for it. So, we've been in contact with the city of Ashton. So again, Jordan's been talking to them. What's that? Yeah. Andy, there you go. And they said that there's, they say there's a water, six inch water line that's underneath the road there. Telecommunications, no gas. And wasn't, I'm not sure of the sewer, but whatever it would take to reposition those within, with what we wanna do there. Certainly we would, we would be responsible for that, but. So, we would like to do the steel project this summer, at least that at a very minimal. To get, we really need to do that replaced in the near future. And just start making plans for, for the next steps.
That, that's our shop right there.
Yes.
We still have access to that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. It would probably more so be from the north, Mike, but we still have through access. You know, kinda like a lot of our, like, each other other facilities will be what have access through it. I think also for the safety of people, you know, when we're heavy into harvest or receive there. Lot of traffic congested right into that small area, a couple blocks because of, you know, just a lot of different directions in which. Everything's south to north, but just, you know, both sides of the street. And we would really like to reposition a dump pit somewhere out into that street area. To, you know, like to put yourself a fifteen hundred or two thousand bushel pit out there. A lot of capacity behind, but that'd be a, a city area.
Had the city already closed part of that road there for you?
Not, yeah, this road going east and west, Mike, they have not closed it, but they considered closing it. They, they more or less did.
But that, that would be turned over to you guys all the time?
I believe so, yeah. It's kinda what it's. So the, the road going, the road going east and west, right here from our steel. Here's the, this road right here. We own all this, in fact, we own, I think we own, we give share of that block. And then we own on the west side of the street as well, this, this empty area here. And we really need to equip some additional storage at the facility too. We've, we're exploring a possibility of, because of the tightness of cement, cement silos. Whether or not to, the right thing is slip cement silos back in the line with what we have there. Or do something different on either side of the street with steel. We, it's not very easy for us to flip commodities there. So, if we wanna build it out for the soybeans, it's something to consider. Although I see beans being a less of a, of an exporter or a shipper than what we'd be doing certain in the future. By, by twenty thirty, we'd expect corn production to increase by at least twenty-five percent. Given current trend line deals. For us, for us alone, that's an extra eleven to twelve million bushels a year.
So you can talk to Ashton about it, what, where they're.
They're open to conversations Jerry, around that, so. So, I guess for a point of clarity, I talked to Mike a little bit beforehand, I talked to Ed just this morning. The street itself, is that owned by Ashton yesterday or is that owned by the county?
From the market.
From the market road?
Yeah.
So it'd be, it would be the county?
Yeah.
We'd have to work with them that.
But I think because of the impact of the city of Ashton, I think the easiest thing to do would be to deed those two blocks. The street over the city of Ashton, let them do what they want with it. Cause they'd have to be the ones with the utilities moving the sewer and moving the water. And all the rest of that stuff and us probably not anything we would coordinate inside city limits.
Sure. Now that's kinda what I'm here to find out is what's the proper channels to go through and how do we, how do we go about bringing that?
First we go with the. Do a T open for gap.
That's what they gave you right there. It'll tell you the proper procedures of closing the FM road.
We have to jump through their first step.
So we need to go through their, through their offices first to.
Then you would just wanna do those two blocks or three blocks there?
I believe so.
And then leave the rest of the road to the FM road?
Yeah.
To drive this into the north.
I thought it would be probably the best to do that. Our exit scale is down the road, if you're familiar with our property at all. As you travel north, scale end is on the south end, you dump and then our exit scale is on the, is on the north end of property. You can't get from just along beyond the old liquid plant. Pull up and in the way empty and then you'll. Everything that goes into the facility today comes off of. Off of, ninety-nine percent of it comes off of Highway sixty or the road that's adjacent to it, runs parallel to it, off sixty. Or from the west you come around and make the loop. But this. And we'd still have room if we repositioned the scale out in here. We'd still have room if there's, you know, you get this early mornings or during the day. Still have room to, to stage our, our farmers as well to the south. That's all built out and ready right here. This would just make that pull up.
What's the next meeting for the FM board?
Dad, we haven't actually come out with the schedule yet. I don't think it's till like mid month. But I was wondering on that, are you going to come up with some sort of a proposed traffic layout? They're gonna wanna know.
We could certainly get a lot more time before we got here to work.
Yeah, that's. It would be a lot easier to discuss or communicate effectively with a point at tool that.
And would the negotiations with, on the farm market, would that come directly from CFE or would that go through the county then?
Will through the county.
Through the county? It looks like we need to have thirty days notice before we can get in front of their board. Which is fine.
Yeah, we'd have to get all of our dunks lined up and, and make that submit to the state. And then they look at it and determine whether they wanna proceed with it or not. And if they do, then they submit to the people that are on the board for the FM changes.
And would, would the support of the wholesale county supervisors or the city council? Ashton be a part of that lineup, so to speak?
Board definitely would be, there'd have to be a resolution to make their statement that they wanna proceed.
Discuss kind of re-designating market market roads down in that area? We ever followed through and got that all done, did we?
Yeah, that's, this is, this is one that did get done. It just got turned over to FM a year ago. I know, cause.
Really?
You know, I'm going into town on that.
You're, you're gonna be excited to see us. That's just water in the river.
Yeah.
Is what it is.
Had, hadn't we wanted old sixteen to be listed? Maybe was that part of it or did that get done? It's part of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was all tied together.
I have a feeling them taking stretches off of departmental information is not a problem for them. We're probably not gonna get the same amount. Designate it back.
Couple lots will make that make a difference though.
Think the traffic pattern thing might be, might be an issue, just, just take two blocks out of it. Just have to see how it goes.
Would it be so?
Take the board out of there?
Well, you can't dead end that farm market road really. That upsets the flow of your pattern. If you dead end it at the end of that few blocks.
Well, I think it's, it's either gonna be all of it or probably none, but, you know, from there all the way to.
To the north?
To the north. But, I mean, that's what their board will decide. That's, that's what they will. You just present what your plans are and then them are the things that they're gonna discuss.
And we get that in person, we do that in person in front of them anyway?
No, we'll put together a submit package and submit it by PDF. And then the state will review it and then they'll process it and put it over to, to the FM board.
So is there a list of things that maybe you'd wanna come up with that we need to submit to you then, decide the traffic flow?
I think if you, if we do this there, that'll, that'll tell you a lot.
It doesn't have to be for the bus innovation.
I think that, I think that's what, you know, how you said if, you know, if they deed it over to the city, you know, and then we're.
I think that way easier just to transfer jurisdiction of that two blocks in the city of Ashton.
Cause I, I think it's a, a multiple step. The first step is trying to get it out FM and then the next step would be, you know, if the city, well, that might even be the first step. Is knowing if the city wants to.
Know that, that being the point, yeah.
Yes. You know, cause if, if they're not in agreement with it, then you're gonna have to leave it FM.
Well, I understand your, they don't have a problem.
Well, I think we need to get in front of their.
Somebody come after the. It'd have to be in writing, not just these verbals. I've got verbals from Andy and all that down there too about this, so, but.
You're, you're okay with that, I understand.
But like I said, no, it needs to be in writing.
We'll, we'll, we'll work to get in front of their town council. With something, alrighty, you know, quick support as well, I suppose then. And then we'll work on this and. Yes, forgive me.
Roger.
Roger?
Roger.
I'll make sure to contact him. Nothing news quickly.
Do you know when they usually meet Roger?
I'm sorry?
Do you know when they usually meet in the spring or, cause I know it's quite a ways off when we had to wait for them to do that last one.
I think they're close to once every month or every other month. I can print it out, I just don't have the in my head.
Should we make a motion to show support for?
I got one more question though, just because, you know, our shop is there. I'm sure you're waiting for that to come up, with how we're gonna handle that, you know, having not access to a public road if you guys purchase that.
I guess, I'd say is if that was the going case, just grant affirmative easily down there.
Yeah, that's something they're gonna have to decide on, how do you wanna handle that?
If that's what you're looking for, you know.
It'll be something.
Really for a new shop. I'm not gonna buy a new shop. I can like whip these jobs. Actually, did you purchase the property over that way?
Yeah.
I didn't. Let me think about that. Okay. Yeah, we'll do whatever it takes. Okay. Well, we'll start working on this now, we'll talk, we'll talk it over and I appreciate you helping. We'll see where we get this. It just seems to me like it makes no sense, long-term for everybody.
What's the value of that road?
I'll just put a new shop by.
That could.
For a while, for a while, I'm saying.
And it's inside the city limits, a lot adds value. You know, so a dollar amount would have to go with that either to the city of Ashton or the county. If we just deeded it over to Ashton and let them take care of it, or if the county did something with it, there'd have to be a dollar amount.
Well, my opinion, if we're gonna do the extension though that you're thinking, we're gonna get some pretty good taxes. And I'd say that's pretty much a wash.
No, cause we already paid for the road.
What?
We already paid for the road.
What did we pay?
Maintenance, repairs. Filing.
Yeah, they put us a new office and everything else there.
If that's inside city limits, it's city taxes. Those are county taxes, not our.
Still get the general.
Not as much of a.
Well, I guess you have to decide whether or not we stand in the county's worth it or not.
Yeah.
For long-term, I think we've done pretty good job doing that. Oh, I, I think absolutely wanted me to went down that road for our customers still. And given the shop a dead end makes me think, I wanna talk to engineering departments, figure out what would be the best approach to that.
With the needs would be a big deal.
Any job that comes on scale? With that equipment?
No.
If it's gonna be out the middle of the road?
We, we'd go north out of the shop. And I think they'd probably do that now. They'd pretty much go north out of the shop now.
It's, I guess, I don't want to do that, I don't know.
He always did used to go to the fuel barrels down there, but we got our own barrel now, so.
First, I can see us deepen over. You know, if we go through Ashton or wherever, that's not a big deal.
I think it should be Ashton's calls, cause it's all inside city limits.
Yeah, I agree.
We'll need to show support.
I saw the, you saw them from the city of Ashton saying everybody's on board.
Well, I'll go to this, I'll go to the city then and we'll get on their, on their next agenda if possible. At the top, we'll start working the plan for the. For the FM board and keep moving forward as we can, so. Appreciate it, appreciate your effort. Appreciate it. Just curious, why would, why would we deed it to Ashton? We're all getting into agreement, if they're the end party, why would we deed it to Ashton then?
Cause you got all the public utilities that belong to the city of Ashton there underneath that road. You got city residents there and talent there may not have want that road closed, which you'd have to have hearings on to get rid of it.
So they said they were gonna take off, care of all the utilities.
That's why I'm saying it'd be easier to deal with the public. That's why I'm saying it'd be easier to deal with the public there that's gonna be impacted by the road closure with the city of Ashland. And then they just design it any way that they see that it works.
I can see both ways, but whatever.
However, I'd like to see the support from the city of Ashland.
Oh, yeah, we definitely have to have their support.
If I've been on over there, of course, and these things going to the schools, that's, that's planned, it's, we got a situation, a lot of, it's, it's happening.
No, actually, they'd have to be on board for it.
All right, so, uh, anything else?
Well, what, what about the twenty-sixth? I need to put that on the agenda for next time. Are you guys gonna attend that during each of fifteen?
I don't know, I don't know, I'm just going on.
So do I just keep them meeting the same at eight forty-five, or do you wanna-
What time is that drainage meeting?
Nine, I believe.
Which one was that again?
Is that D number fifteen in Dickinson County, they're having a public hearing on the twenty-sixth, and I didn't know if the board, if all the boards are gonna go, or just one or two?
I think we both want, want to start doing that.
The two, like the twenty-sixth, that, that's an old calendar.
Me and Mike go on these three, and have the meeting.
Yeah.
So it's also budget review time, too, so.
Well, I don't, I don't give a-
You might be gone the rest of the day.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a long meeting, I guess. Yeah, we do that soon.
We have, we have to get a TV in here.
I wonder if they're gonna-
Come on, you're, you're just trying to get out of budgets.
No.
Well, also, we, we get my hat.
Whenever you guys, right, you're all in the goals.
Run out of gas.
Yeah.
There's a lot of things that can happen, so, yeah.
What are you talking about, what?
Times and-
I have to start at ten thirty or something like that, and just see.
Whatever.
Ten thirty.
Have you planned Monday, Tuesday, or Tuesday, Wednesday?
Tuesday, Wednesday, twenty-sixth and twenty-sixth. I can add up to the ten thirty, I don't know what you guys want, I choose.
Whatever you guys thought, I'm gonna go to that.
I think we should have representation over there.
Oh, yeah. We'll go to that meeting, we'll come back, we promise.
Something when I start at ten thirty. Yeah, we can be back here by six, for a reason.
Yeah.
All right.
Ten thirty and the twenty-sixth, perfect. My notes, I can read that.
Any other ones? Again, each one of you, just not be on, uh, you cannot be down there. Just something interesting to look at.
You guys got that letter from, uh, yeah, so, last week that came, Andy from, she said qualification for home health, did you guys have that letter?
We received a copy of the mental annexation report for the fifteen last December.
It would have to be by staff, probably.
Yeah.
I thought he said he did.
Yeah.
What, you got anything else?
Make a motion to check.
Motion there. Support, some, for support, all over the paper.
Right.
Hi, hi.
You said that's December eighteenth, we got that? Were you sure?
Good news, take your apple on there?
Well, it's four A weekend.
Two in my-
Four people, so.
I know, that's been a week for us.
Hi.
Hi there.
Is that doing this?
Are you just discussing, or we're discussing?
What do you guys think about the shop?
Well, you know, I think they're gonna have to propose a traffic pattern, uh, configuration there, because just to dead end it.
Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna let itself, uh, run up, it's gonna be just a city.
But just, but just like when a chain drives through anywhere, and then- Just like when a chain where everybody's arms too long, like-
I don't know.
That would be a change, sorry.
And that's, you just check that out, to see what all is there, you know, they did that a year and a half ago, and I can, you know, as soon as Dan got here, we got it signed off, I think.
So what do you guys think?
I'm okay with it.
No, but I mean, you think they'll-
I've never really dealt with them, so, you know, I, it's, it's hard to say, you know, and, I think, uh, taking it out, probably easier than what it is.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, like I said, swap, cause I've never made anything back from the original.
Right, and, and that's what I was-
Well, we'll just swap, just- Well, if that thousand interchange on sixty, Old Sixty, Old Sixty heading down, uh, access, if that's ever made its part of the market.
I don't know, that is not a problem.
Yeah.
I don't remember this.
We said we, didn't move that last time, did we?
Yeah, but I don't-
Wasn't it one block over, and then we moved it?
We actually added, though.
Cause we took off the dead end, this Old Sixty, and then I think we were even across that bridge, and then went, and, uh-
Thank you.
Can you just give me a map of what we have, for Department Market Roads?
For fire.
So like, when they close that road, if they buy it, or if, if you close that road, you know, any other road that you close, it all goes back to the landowners to the center of the road, you know? And so they would, whoever owns property along that, they would have to buy out the property from them. And from what I hear, that too, uh, whoever's right to the north, we do not own that lot right to the north of our shop. Cause that, that's how that works when you close a road, it goes back to the landowners surrounding it.
But they don't have that road anyway, then, cause they own it, they own the east side of it.
Mm-hmm, which is no problem, they're going to-
They still do, yeah.
Right, and I don't know if we wanna hold it purely on property that's not ours.
Yeah, but we'd have amusement to-
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's gonna work out, you know.
Like Craig said, that would be a problem. I'd rather have them build the same building. I, I'm serious, I just wanted to expand the wholesale county.
It's the only, it's the only trickle line they have, every, and, and you know.
They're gonna, they're gonna, I think, but I think we should work with them a little bit, uh, make them more active, we don't-
Look at all this open green space here on the other side, why don't they buy that?
I was gonna ask. Love playing.
That would make- That'd make way more sense.
Rather than taking all this-
All this green space here.
Rather than even having those trucks go across those railroad tracks, and have it dump it to the other side, and park it over.
I've seen that, but-
Yes.
How are we?
This probably was, too.
No.
Sure, it's very tired.
No?
I'd go down there Friday night. Just drive, just drive down that road.
Well, they can bring it out, you just gotta bring in some dirt, you just gotta bring in dirt for it to come out. There's funny dirt.
I know, I'm not really, it's a lot, I have personal, you know, you know.
So, they don't own this.
Yeah, we, we want to sort of park a lot, that's where, not where guys park, their employees. That's their shout. That's, it is whole, that's, I don't know who has that. That is a non-coming, so that's a non-coming, you know? Yeah, no. Uh, which one does Corvita have? No, I can't, Corvita's a little further away, that's gonna be, I think. I think, yeah. Yeah, this, this is the buyer, and this is, this is, used to be a problem, so, all their, it shouldn't be Corvita, insist on the traffic.
But this guy here, nobody knows about this.
What, what they, uh, what they, 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 what do they think?
Are they talking about expanding here, with the bins? Is that where you're pointing at, or can I catch that?
This is one more block, and they're about to be, uh, two more blocks.
Ideally, you should want to buy this guy, understand if you're gonna expand.
Do you remember what he said?
What, you repeat?
I think it was over there behind your shop.
I think it was. We're going, we're getting back down, like, coming down and going around, but you're not getting, or is it gonna be the street down there, on the park, Park Street? You know, I mean, out of home.
Cause I know they need it, cause I watched truck screaming there, that's never tough to get through, to get to the old-
You had more bins, you had more truck drivers, I mean, it's really, uh-
I don't, I don't-
The city residents of Ashland, I think they want that, or these trucks.
This here's a whole, they're still down there. All the traffic, it's, you know, it's, we have, we're going down. You don't turn around and hear it.
Right now, they can do that, or they have, they should, they have that memory of, yeah. Take that out of the-
I just wanna say, they really don't need any more, they have all kinds of junk. The, the shop they got now was-
No, but I mean, if, if they're not, like, dead end, more to buy that property. If they were gonna expand there, I mean, that's why, is this what they're gonna do?
No, but it would be dead end, I mean, they provide.
We're talking about expansion. So, I think so, I wouldn't sort of that, but.
And I think not more than anybody.
It's not a shop.
This is the shop, right, huh?
That's our shop.
I'm just saying, will they be beneficial, especially if they're gonna expand, the craft traffic to have our shop?
But right on the north side of our shop, uh, should, used to be a mile or two down there.
Well, I mean, just for a drive, cause they can't get in off here.
Well, they can come and get in the shop, nothing there's, that, cause that's where the park creatures and stuff.
I wanna buy our shop.
Right there, that's all theirs, because that's where they-
I know, but you start putting big bins like that, look how much-
Hold that, Terry.
Much area it takes.
Before the block, your parents.
I, what you, I wanna see something from the city of Ashland. Cause we, as, I've actually asked, we did that on your lot, and we got just this out here, uh, everything just completed, my feet's on it, so. We got an employee, a little feet, you know, on, on the next wall, all of the school, you know, cars.
Yeah, it's all like downtown cars, yeah.
Yeah.
Your cars, come on.
I don't afford, I don't afford this, but I have to go and make sure everybody else is good.
They couldn't come back, conflict the interest on you, could they? You being on-
Oh, I'm not on that board.
Oh, you're not, okay.
I'm on FC, it's, it's, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, with me and Audrey, would that be a conflict of interest?
Who's board?
FC and-
I'm off now.
Oh, you're off, okay.
Yeah, I'm off, that's what I'm saying. I just know, let's give them any bad touch.
Oh, yeah.
Because I don't tell you, I'm way up front.
Shoot, we have one crap site down the building, you know, right?
I'm trying to get you a new shop, Mike.
That's why that's better than Ashland's, you know?
We could ask them if they give us our shop, and they don't agree with us.
I think they'd be beneficial to have that, yeah.
Yeah, that would be the best thing, if they just bought it for their use, you know, and we would just-
Well, isn't that when they were talking about expansion of bins, uh, just, just west of their shop, or whatever that is, or Central Shedd, or whatever that is, or- If they ever do expand, or just say they put four bins like they got there, it's gonna take that whole area, then they're gonna need traffic flow, too.
Whatever.
We call a call, please?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, whatever you're ready.
Let's get ready for the drainage.
Drainage district? I need to open the meeting. Gonna open the meeting for the drainage district forty-three? Prove the agenda.
Some move.
Or?
Well, it's all-
Hey Cole, this is Michelle, just starting the drainage meeting.
December fourteen minutes.
Okay, morning, everybody.
Morning, morning, for all.
Dale and Jesse Braxler are here as well.
Okay.
Somebody wanna go, let's go through all that, it's not functioning.
Second.
All over the paper?
Aye.
Terry, consider Jesse Braxler's claim for twenty-twenty crop damages.
I thought we had already discussed.
I did too.
Not for the twenty-twenty, we did the twenty-one, but not the twenty-twenty, right, Cole? The board thought that, that they already discussed it.
Sorry, what was that?
They thought they already discussed this, but we did the twenty-twenty one crop, not the twenty-twenty crop damage, correct?
Correct, so, what we're looking at today, Jesse had filed the claim, uh, at their original meeting, uh, and it was overlooked, um, this, uh, we would wanna set rates for the twenty-twenty crop damages, uh, so that, since that was the crop that, uh, is being discussed in question, would be for twenty-twenty crop, not twenty-twenty one. And it was all soybeans that was damaged, so we'd only need to set the rate, uh, for soybeans.
So his request was submitted timely, and it's a reasonable request, in your opinion?
Yes.
Trying to find that recommendation there.
Two thirty-seven oh seven. Is that the recommendation, Michelle?
Yeah, he sent Cole's email this morning.
Yeah, so we recommend, uh, that the compensation rate for the soybeans, uh, twenty-twenty soybeans that were damaged, uh, be set at eight dollars and ninety-eight cents per bushel.
So there's half, it's, I hear it's always recommended.
Yeah, but you see the January fourth, the U two, the three?
Yeah.
So that's the two thirty-seven oh seven for the two claims.
Yeah, that's-
Forty and forty-one for the soybeans, ninety-six, sixty-six, for the plant.
That Jesse would get reimbursed with forty forty one, and Dale and Deanna would get reimbursed with one ninety six sixty six.
One ninety six.
One ninety six.
One ninety six.
Yeah. And that, is that at that rate of eight dollars and ninety eight cents per bushel then, Cole? What you wrote it as?
Correct, yes.
But the board will have to approve that rate first, correct?
Yeah, they should set that, uh, rate for the twenty twenty, uh, soybean damage of eight dollars and ninety eight cents per bushel.
Let's make a motion to set that rate at eight ninety eight.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right. Motion, Gary.
Make a motion on the claim for Jesse Braxler for forty forty one.
Motion?
Could you guys explain that a little bit more, I don't think I'm quite following, is there a number of acres that are being recommended? Because I was never exactly sure of that figure.
Zero point one five.
Okay, on my side?
Yep.
Okay, and then what was the?
Seven three.
Oh, on the other side, okay, okay.
So, Cole, how did you figure out the, the yield, I guess, per acre, or better rate, but?
Ten year average of it?
Uh, I guess, I would ask Jesse, do you have, uh, any yield data for those?
No, I do not. I was just gonna accept a.
I guess, do you have a?
An average.
Do you have, do you have an estimate, uh, in your head of how many bushes per acre you thought, uh, would have been on those pieces?
For that area of the field, no, I really don't, I was, in order to make it easy for everybody, I was just gonna accept a, you know, an average, basically, whatever the board thinks is reasonable.
Did you use fifty four point one, Cole?
Yeah.
So, we did not use the fifty four point one, uh, based on, I guess, the size of the soybean crop, and then also, uh, at the time it was damaged, uh, the, the pods had began to drop onto the ground, so, there's already yield loss that would have been occurring, uh, the contractor, uh, delayed, uh, construction basically as long as possible before going on those to try to avoid the crop damage, uh, they didn't go on to the property, uh, to do any work until, uh, there was the first snow, so, we're recommending a lower rate of thirty bushels per acre, uh, average, uh, on those soybeans based on the size of the soybean being, uh, about foot tall, and pods being dropping, so, for reference, uh, typical, uh, fully mature soybean plant, uh, is between thirty one to forty seven inches tall, so, they would not have been at the fully, uh, mature height, uh, for a soybean, uh, to be harvested, and pods that already began to drop, uh, based upon the time of year, uh, from the soybean plant, so, we feel that, uh, going, uh, thirty, uh, bushels per acre, uh, which is about, uh, sorry, about fif- just over fifty percent of what the county average yield would be, uh, ten year average yield would be, due to the, I guess, circumstances surrounding that, given that the pods were dropping, and the soybeans were not at the fully mature height with damage.
Now, Cole, I have to, I have to disagree with that pretty strenuously, do you have any documentary evidence of that? Because my dad in my position is that the beans were just fine, without any documentary evidence or any accounting, that's really, really speculative and prejudicial to us.
Unless you did bring in your yields.
Which I, I didn't, I thought, I don't have any yields for that area of the field, is all, so that's.
We do have documentation showing the soybean plant, and pods on the ground, and that there was snow in the field and it was damaged.
I remember no pods on the ground. The snow looks like it's nearly gone, I, I mean, we harvested the beans, we know that there were not significant pods on the ground, the pods were not even opened, um, I guess, to, to be perfectly honest with everybody, I'm surprised that you're making such an issue of this, Cole, because it's a tiny amount of acres, and, well, we've been relatively cooperative, there's been a number of damages we've experienced that we didn't even turn in, um, I'm disappointed that we're kind of, uh, arguing over this small of an issue, I guess I'd just like to settle it by asking the board just to use an average.
I guess, I'm open to that, does the board, is the board open to using the fifty four point one, um, ten year average?
I mean, you gotta base it off of plant height, and if you got it in late, and that's all the higher it was, I mean.
Is there any documentation of that? Number one, two, uh, plant height has no, uh, correlation to yield, absolutely zero. It's about the number of pods and the plant population, it's, beans that are tall don't yield eighty, and short yield thirty, it's not that simple.
I know what my twelve inch beans look like, they're probably twenty bushel.
Sometimes they're packed with pods, and I would assert that there were, there were no twelve inch beans out there, I believe the, the beans to the west were tall, the beans to the east were shorter. And it's such a, it's such a small amount of acres, I just, I don't wanna make too big of an issue, but, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of offended that we're digging this deep into it.
Well, are you sure you just brought your yields?
I don't have any yields for those specific areas, I have whole field yield, and I don't have.
You got the whole field yield for that farm?
Uh, yes, I believe I do.
Did you bring it in?
I'm not sure where, no, I didn't, because I find that irrelevant, because the tile digs were just through one small area.
It's based on an average of the field, whether I mean, it's in the county average, or your field average, your field average would be more in range with where it should be than the county average.
Possibly.
So it's probably higher than the county average.
I'm not sure, I have to, I would have to check, but I'm hearing, I'm just, I'm hearing a lot of speculation.
But if you're gonna, if you're gonna make the claim on the net, then you really need to bring the yields in.
I, I can do that, if you would like me to, I think that's, for the number of acres, I think that's awfully complicated, I'd rather keep it simple for the board.
I mean, I got my average for everything that I have, for every farm, it's not that hard.
No, no, I, no, I understand that.
It's on my insurance papers.
Sure. Well, I assume you didn't want us to have to come back and do that, if you'd like us to, we can.
I would assume you just brought it with you now.
No, no, I didn't, no, I, I left it to the engineers, measured it, and all of the other claims, um, except for the few guys that turned in a corn yield, were all paid just on a, we, on the twenty twenty one claim, we accepted the ten year average, and I thought that would be simpler here, too.
Cause there were other guys at the last meeting that submitted yields.
Yes, that had high, that had yields significantly higher, and we just accepted the county average.
I guess it's, I think it'd just be easier to resolve it now, uh, rather than push it off another week, uh, it isn't a significant, it's a rather small number of acres, uh, I guess, if Jesse's asking for the county average, rather than push it off another week, uh, I, I guess my recommendation is maybe just go with the ten year average, whether the board's about.
I would appreciate that, Cole, thank you for that.
My inclination is you've put in the legwork to figure out why and what you recommend, and there's need to documentate, absolute documentation on either hand. I split the difference, I'd say let's figure it at forty two bushels per acre, and pay the claim, both things on that.
That sounds fair to me, how does that sound?
What's that come out to, right down or?
Motion. I'll make that motion, and I reckon around a forty two times.
Fifty six dollars and thirty seven cents for that is.
Fifty six what?
Fifty, fifty seven.
I'd make a motion on fifty six, fifty seven.
Yeah, I guess, like, and I said, I made a, like, second.
But there's two claims, you gotta do them separate.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So then my first motion died for the last.
That's how I was treating it, I'm sorry, I don't like that.
I agree with that, just, just when I was trying to figure.
The first motion died of the forty forty one.
Yeah.
Yes. I'll make a motion, based upon forty two bushels per acre at eight ninety eight, plus point one five acres for fifty six fifty seven. Your board? Yeah, motion in support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So he didn't, you didn't support that?
Mike, my, I, I just, uh, I support it. I know, you gotta look, you look at it like.
It's a new year.
It's the chairman, it's not me.
Yeah.
All right. All those that I can, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I am. All those opposed, motion, Gary.
And then for the other property, if we do forty two bushels per acre, point seven three acres, at eight ninety eight per bushel, we come to two seventy five thirty three.
I'll make that motion.
Pay that motion?
Support.
And support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion, Gary. I believe that's all, all we have, I mean, the motion to adjourn, so, we. I support that, motion in support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, Gary.
Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you all.
Have you heard the W nine yet?
Yeah.
Okay, you heard everything?
Yeah, Dan brought it in, I think, right back, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Eight.
Thank you all.
You gotta stay on.
I think you stay on.
I was gonna stay after one more meeting.
All right. We need to open the meeting for drainage district number one, prove the, the report agenda. Issues are brought up, motion on that agenda? Motion support, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All those opposed, motion, Gary. December fourteenth, twenty twenty one, shouldn't it be?
Oh, yeah, should be, whoops.
Yeah, that's.
Twenty one is going to be.
Motion accepted. I'm willing to accept most second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion, Gary. Consider applying ISG for construction state and distribution services.
You guys got anything you wanna add, Mike?
Mike and Roger are here too, Cole, from the engineer's office.
Yeah, I, I had a missed call from Mike, I tried to get back home, but I wasn't able to, uh, before the meeting, so, uh.
I'm here now, Cole.
I'm here now, Mike, okay. So, I guess, you guys, I guess, I talked to Rochelle about this, uh, a little bit, uh, and then, uh, also Mike and Roger, uh, on some of this stuff as well, uh, as far as, uh, construction staking goes, uh, if needed, uh, we can provide, uh, construction staking, uh, out there, uh, as well as, uh, construction administrative services, uh, if that is also wanted, so, I guess, uh, Mike and Roger, have you had, you two had any additional discussions on what you'd be looking for out there on G P D one?
I guess, administration wise, it would just be, uh, uh, compliance checks, periodic, I mean.
Can you hear him, Cole?
I don't think the contractor is one of those guys that you have to hover over in order to, uh, get desired results. The, uh, thing I was staking is that we were in that area before with our G P S equipment, and quite honestly, couldn't get a signal to drive it when we were in that low lying area, and I don't know, if you surveyed the, uh, tool block on that, and so, did you use a base station up on the hill to, uh, transmit your signal?
Uh, we, uh, for that, we would have used, uh, satellites, so we would have been operating on a, I have a real time network, uh, we would not have set up a base station, uh, for that survey that we did out there originally, for staking purposes, we would set, set up a base station though.
Well, since we have problems with our equipment out there, why don't you guys stake it, and then we can just, uh, oversee the project, make sure it's done right? Does that work?
Okay, yeah, that, uh, that'll work, so, we'll take care of, uh, the construction staking, which will include staking of the bird, and staking of, uh, the surf strength location, as well as, uh, staking of, I guess, when, whatever staking's needed, uh, for that tile outlet, uh, as well, is that what you guys would be looking for?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay. And then you guys would be taking care of, uh, processing of many pay applications, uh, for the job and general, uh, construction observations?
Yeah, we can do that, and I know they are gonna be there next spring, so, you know, there will be crop damage, I talked to the farmer, he says just make one track going in and out, and Rocky knows that too, so, there will, I don't know, if that compaction will be a problem or not before they plant or not, but hopefully we'll get it done for crop damage or anything.
There we go. I guess, and I, I guess, complete the, let me pull this up, I believe that on that project, uh, with the bid, the completion date, uh, listed on there is May first, twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
So, I guess that date was kinda selected in trying to avoid the crop damages, uh, that would be occurring out there, and if it is done by May first, twenty twenty two, it would allow time for the farmer to do, uh, putting, like, plankings out there still, following the construction.
I just, I just was, uh, just saying that because sometimes, you know, that spring work, some farmers are very particular about compaction, so.
Yeah.
That was, I don't know, thought about that, so.
Would they present a rate, or how is that determined for the staking?
So, uh, right now, I, I do have a estimate, uh, put together for staking, uh, and it would be a non take the number, so, uh, and I'm just assuming one trip out there, and a full, uh, day of staking at eleven hundred dollars would be our estimate, non take the.
Yes, that's not gonna, that won't, it's not gonna change your guys' opinion, whoa, better do it for that.
Well, it must be something that doesn't work.
We, uh, would still have to enter into some sort of, uh, arrangement with the drainage district, even if we did it, would we not?
We would submit our bill.
So, six, one and a half dozen.
If we did it, we'd have two or three bikes out there, with the old way, with the old take measure and.
And that, that eleven hundred dollars, non take the, would be, you know, if, if, if the staking, I have six hours of staking out there, and three hours of travel, uh, to get up there and back, so, what we're looking at, you know, if it gets out there and it takes, you know, only two hours, well, you're gonna be, uh, you know, we're not gonna charge you the full eleven hundred.
In case it's a little all that. Do we have to send this to Dickinson County for approval, since it's a joint one, once we make the recommendation?
I don't believe, I've been sending them the minutes, but since, right, Cole, Dickinson County doesn't need to approve this, right, since most of the work is being done in Osceola, or?
Uh, this should be, uh, yeah, well, the land being assessed for can be in all of Osceola County.
I have been sending her the minutes. Well, she knows.
Yeah, that's, you probably, yeah, still get to send the minutes.
What if all that is on a branch, is that why it's only assessed to the county or?
It would be, yeah, it's, uh, to, basically, all the lands that are benefiting from this work, this is, that's the very, very top end, are on the main tile.
Right, there's just one main tile schedule probably, isn't there, so it would be assessed across all?
All the main tiles in Osceola County.
Is there main tile in Dickinson County at all, is all in Osceola?
It's all in Osceola.
Uh-huh, all right.
That's an old chapter.
That's where it stops.
Yeah, okay, I'll make a motion to. Yeah, okay, I'll make a motion to proceed with the I S G construction staking only, but not to T W O, I mean, all of this.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close. Did, Cole, did you have any further conversation on that one piping price that you thought was way out of whack, or?
Uh, I guess as far as that pipe price goes, you know, it's what he did, all his other numbers are, uh, you know, made sense, and I guess with that one, it's just kinda, you gotta eat it, since it's what he did, uh, would be my opinion on it, and all his other numbers, uh, are right in line with what we expect, uh, with just that one being slightly out of, uh, or, you know, higher than what we had anticipated, uh, so, I guess, without going into full negotiation in, uh, nitpicking the prices, I guess, my recommendation would be just to, uh, accept that as the price for that pipe, especially since we, there won't be any change order, uh, needed for it, on that, you know, if it's gonna be claimed when you're feeding pipes, no matter what, there's not gonna be an additional thirty six inch out of pops up out there, that we didn't know how, that's gonna be, you know, more of that pipe. So, I guess my opinion would just be, uh, for that, uh, one thirty six inch can be, to just accept that as the price.
Yeah, I, I asked him about it, and I said he could look into it.
And some of this has to do too with corrugated metal, uh, pipe, is, some, uh, of the sizes are hard to find, and, or maybe the local supply yards don't have it, is possibly why it's higher. Did you say you talked to him about it, Mike?
I did, sure did. Said he's gonna look into it.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess if, you know, you guys do talk to him, and he accepts a lower price on it, it can just be, I guess that'd be taken care of on the construction administration side, things, uh, if you would wanna take care of that through a change order, to change the price, or, you know, basically, if you, you know, just a handshake deal, if that's what you guys wanna do, but I guess my opinion would be on that price, just, uh, accept it as is, uh, for right now.
Yeah, cause I'm underneath the other bid, so.
Yeah, just say we accept it.
And I know he did, uh, call a pipe, got the prices locked in, uh, for this project, so, and then it's to be delivered this winter or next spring.
All right.
And I guess the only other thing that I have as far as staking and stuff goes, uh, you know, will plan I get-